Good evening. Angela Urban here. I'm going to call the meeting to order. And it is 7 o'clock PM on the dot. And then, Marcus, I'd like to ask if you would take role of the members present?
Mr. Hayes. Ms. O'Donnell. Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Shepherd.
Here.
Urban?
Here.
Your Weiss? Wees?
Weiss.
Okay, thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
So, first item we want to do is approval of the minutes from our last regular meeting, which happened on April 3rd, 2024.
I have one change. Phyllis Williams called me today and said that she was in attendance at the last meeting. But we need to add her, I'll add her to the others present.
And I'd like to suggest a change. On page four of the minutes, I think when we, it was when we had, let's see, about the walk, oh, Annie Adams, kind of at the top of the page, it says she's a member of the BPAC. And I think it'd be better if we spelled out what that is, the bicycle, just because I know it has something to do with bikes, but I think it'd be better if we spelled it out. And that's my only suggestion.
Thank you.
I appreciate that because sometimes we don't understand what these acronyms really stand for, and it's always good to say at least once.
Yeah.
Agreed, thank you. Any other comments on the minutes before we approve? Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
All right, a second?
I'll second, Dennis.
All right, thank you. All members in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All right, minutes are approved and will be corrected as, as we've mentioned here. Moving on, audience participation.
Written communications.
Oh, sorry, did I miss something? Written communications? I don't really know what to do with written communications. Did we receive any?
That's what we ask. Terry, did we receive any written communications other than Phyllis? Okay. Nope, no written communications.
All right, thank you. All right. And then, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the Historic Preservation Commission on any topics? There, as far as I'm aware, there's not any public hearings. And there is not any unfinished business so far. No new public hearings? I'm not aware of new business right now that we have.
It might come up, but after the staff report.
Okay. Is that what we want to go for?
We have no new business listed on the agenda.
Gotcha.
Yeah, we couldn't, it's not an actionable item then. Right.
Okay.
Any, staff did not do any property monitoring? Did any members happen to do any monitoring?
Okay. Just the one that I, I know is of high interest to the public that has come up multiple times regarding the hotel. Do we have a date yet? Do we know?
We do not have a date of when it's going to be open. They still have an active certificate of appropriateness for the exterior renovations that continue. And I'll talk a little bit more about that during the staff report.
Okay, great. All right, and then just the next item is that staff report.
So, the staff report that was included in the packet, we have gotten continued interest in R7-zoned properties, the University Residential zoning district. People seem to be happy that they have additional options for redeveloping, especially into multifamily. They like the allowance that doesn't require them to add in additional parking for approved uses. So all of those things line it up. We still currently have only had one adaptive reuse project, and that was for, who, I think it was like 606 West Washington, it was about a year or so ago, it was a fraternity, I think, that was converted into apartments, and they took.
I think it was on.
Okay, that's right, yes. And we haven't had any recent landmarking inquiries. We still have our fingers crossed that First United Methodist Church would like to do a local landmarking in addition to the National Register listing that I understand that they are interested in doing. The next item is the HPC bylaws review. We had reviewed the bylaws back in February and proposed updates in the language. At this time, we are going to be taking those to the new city attorney to get them to make sure that they make sense. And then, we will look at our other boards and commissions on an individual basis rather than trying to do all of them at the same time. And the next item on the agenda is a CLG grant opportunity.
Could you stand, what does that stand for?
Certified Local Government, so jurisdictions that meet certain criteria, including having a preservation commission, having a preservation ordinance, having an active enough monitoring program, and a, an inventory of historic properties, which the city does, are eligible to apply for local government certification with the State Historic Preservation Office. We've been a CLG for a long time. Many years ago, they started a CLG grant program where the CLGs could apply for funding to do projects. I think the last project that Urbana did was in 2015, which was a historic preservation website with the interactive map.
And they paid for a, in, summer intern or something, paid the?
Yes. So they did all the programming for that. Unfortunately, the online platform that that was based on is no longer functioning, so we are without an interactive map. We might be able to do something similar to that, working with students moving forward. But that was our last project. We had, I had a meeting with John Presley, who is the CLG coordinator for the state, last week. Every four years, they're required to meet with each of the CLGs in person. This was the year for Champaign and Urbana. He said that they are hoping to have another cycle of grants in September. You can see historic grant information on their website, look at what the applications look like and what projects have been done in the past. It's a competitive program, but often they don't give away all of their funding. So if people are able to submit grants, there's a good chance of them getting funded. Dennis had shared with me a couple months ago, he was interested in possibly looking for funding from the Historic Preservation Commission for expanding on the Joseph Royer District signage program that you've been doing for a long time. I think it was both replacing signs that are wearing out, but also are there additional properties that don't have signs yet?
Yes, and I could speak to it maybe, I don't know if that would be appropriate in our study session following, could we do that without it being listed specifically?
No, but if you want to talk about it a bit here, and then, I want to basically say, there are other ideas for doing grants. We don't have staff time to write grants, but if a commission member or multiple commission members wanted to work amongst themselves or by themselves or with other people and put together a grant that could be submitted under the city's, you know, AEGUS, I think the word is, AEGUS. Again, I haven't done a grant, I haven't seen it before, but I would be happy to look into it if somebody has a special project that they'd like to do. And I listed some other things in addition to the Royer District, and I don't think there is any limit on the number of applications that a jurisdiction can submit.
No, there we are. I see that the uses and restrict, underuses and restrictions, the categories are survey projects, National Register nomination and listing revision projects, planning projects, public education projects, which was what it would have been before, and then there's something in relation to the National Park Service and their special intermittent reimbursement grants for materials publication. But, so, having had some experience with web platforms that, for example, expire, I'm just wondering if a grant could hire a company, like one of the terrific ones we have in historic buildings on Main Street, one of them, to take that content and bring it forward into a web platform that's not likely to go away?
Right.
So that we could at low cost, since there's already information gathered, we could at low cost hire some professionals to lay it out in a way that's really compelling. I mean, there's one firm in particular that I've worked with through our university that our college hired, that has done terrific work. We're ecstatic with what it looks like and how resilient it is, and the way it was set up was so that we ourselves could add new content, take things away, we could amend it, we don't ever have to hire them again. They got us set up, and on we go. So that, I would be interested in joining with colleagues and putting together an application for something like that if that's of interest to others.
Is there a maximum, is it like three, or you could ask for 10,000, or?
Does it have range?
I was, I was running about, it says that in, actually, I don't know that this is, yeah, this, this website isn't, there are multiple things, but this is the one that came up. And so it looks like 110 to 150,000 in the total pool is what's available, but, don't quote me on that. But they, I don't see any information there about a limit, like a cap on how much you could ask for.
One of the, the big things I think is, in the application has to have a budget description, all of those things. Those are, you know, I'm not a grant writer, so somebody who wants to work on these, I think, would have to bring a bit of a skill set with them, and I'm happy to offer guidance. And so, i- if you are interested in working on that, David, I would be glad to help on that one. Dennis, if you're interested in doing one for the, the Royer District signage, I think that would fit under, you know, public education, you know, because I've seen the signs, they aren't just the newspaper, the courier, it, you know, goes through the, the whole history of them.
What about on the execution side, though? Because, I mean, just writing the grant is one part of it, the other part is actually doing, doing it if you get the grant, right?
Yes.
So if the, if staff does not have the ability to write the grant, that's understandable, but would staff be able to help with the actual execution, or no?
It all depends. So if the grant was to hire a firm to design and install the signs, that's not staff intensive. We would probably want to see changes to the brochure, that might involve, you know, additional consultancy to update the brochure. If we wanted to have the district, the Royer District shown on the interactive map, that item should also be in that application to have maybe some staff time in the future to add on additional sites. That would be minimal, but like designing the signs, installing the signs, that would be beyond the scope of staff time.
Thank you.
One, so one point qualification here is that the things that I'm seeing online, I'm talking about matching.
Mm-hmm.
But then, matching in, in, on something from 2022 about this, matching didn't mean equal amounts, because it said that you couldn't exceed from, the grant couldn't cover more than 70% of the project budget, which would imply that you have to, you have to put in 30%.
John Presley did say, though, that in-kind includes staff or volunteer time, so, you know.
My rate is $1,000 an hour. I'm kidding.
But, and that was my first question to him, is, you know, I know the, the city council doesn't have a priority of historic preservation, so we have to do this at basically a zero-dollar, you know, out-of-city pocket.
Yeah.
Wallet.
But so the in-kind could be working with, if we're hiring somebody, it could be gathering the information and channeling it into them?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
So before, I don't know if you want to cover this topic more, but if I have an opportunity to talk about, you know, a project that I'd like to see happen?
Yes.
I made a, a little handout for people, so I'm just going to pass these down, if you would.
As long as we have one extra copy for Terry.
And I believe you will. Yeah. So, the Royer District is intended to be educational, yes, to the public, to, to visually give signage to the downtown, which is common in many historic districts and towns that have special, special downtown areas devoted to community history. And the Royer District was established in 2007 by a resolution of the city council. That resolution is in your, in your handout on page two. And introduction about how the discussion about historic preservation occurred back in 2008, when this was established. And its intent was to education, historic preservation, acknowledgement, and tourism. Many people going to a downtown area would be curious about some of the curious buildings we have here and its history, and unless there's a brochure or a booklet, one way would be just to walk through the downtown and to see signage. So that was one reason why they ever created. A sample of the signs, one of the signs, a wall plaque, is on the last page of your handout. And, you know, these were designed long, you know, like, I don't know, 15 years ago, but the intent was to, to suggest a historic look to match the historic buildings. So some downtowns, like I know in Ann Arbor and others, the signage is very modern, but others is more, they're more historic-looking. So, you know, whether we, whether you like this that, that much or not today, it's been serviceable, and I, and it's easy to identify on the building. And on the first page, you have a list of the 11 buildings which have been, nine of them have already had the signage placed on them. And the last two, the Royer Hotel, Hotel Royer, and Canaan Baptist Church are in progress currently. I'll just list the nine that have already been created. The Champaign County Courthouse, July 2011, dedicated. Urbana High School, August 2012. The Matthew Bucy Memorial Library, which is to the front of the Urbana Free Library, dedicated in 2014. The revision, the Urbana-Lincoln Hotel, 2014, with a revision in 2020 under new ownership. The Knowlton and Bennett Building, 2015. The Unitarian Church, 2016. Lincoln Lodge, recently demolished, 2016. Nathan Cohen Building, 2017. The Courier Newspaper, 2021. Right now, the renovation with new text for the Hotel Royer is in process and being produced in San Luis, and Canaan Baptist Church has been designed, but the church doesn't really have the funding to proceed, they don't feel like they do. We're talking about, I'll talk about the funding later. All of these signs were designed by myself and no charge to the city. The ones that are on the courthouse, the library, the church, and the high school were funded by those organizations. The hotel, Bennett Building, Lincoln Lodge, Cohen Building, Courier Building were all paid for by the owners of the building, so it incurred no charge to the city. Those individuals wished to have the recognition and were willing to pay for the signage. The signage costs have increased over the years. Freestanding sign on a post is more expensive than a wall plaque. But we do, we did start with a freestanding sign, and we have that at the high school, the Unitarian Church, the courthouse. And some locations, it's easier to put a sign on the building, and others, for the perspective, or maybe just, you know, because they don't want things on the building, or you can't approach the building easily during the school day. And of course, these are also intended to be near the street, the public walkways, and so downtown, that's accessible, but at the high school, a person would have to walk up to the front door to see it, so we put that, you know, standing, freestanding. So the cost of implementation of the sign is moot, because I'm happy to continue to design them and to create them. It would seem like it might be maybe too late to start changing the how they look, because then they wouldn't match. But I also listed additional sites that could easily be celebrated downtown. These are Royer buildings, because we have so many of them in this town. The site of the Flatiron Building, now the person who owns Allman's Garage Properties has talked to me like five times about putting a plaque there. But you also have the Louise McWilliams residence, the Gus Freeman residence, which is a historic landmark, the Knights of Pithias building, the Tierman building, that owner has talked to me about a plaque also, Mary Lloyd residence, the early, one of the earliest freestanding Urbana post offices, which is now the Rose Block, it's clad, looks different, but one could still celebrate it, the Stevens Building downtown, and the Jubiling Building. So there's lots one can do. It's on Main Street, I don't have the address, but it's in the middle of the block, it's, I think it was an Undertaker's Building originally, you know, back in like 18, 19, like, oh, 10 or something like. Yes, I think that's when, that's where it is. And there's also, I didn't list on here, but the Fox Building, which was now a real estate office next to the Stephens Building on Main Street, where it curves. So there's plenty one could do. So I'll probably work with you to ask for, what I would like to see is maybe the city share the cost of placing the plaques on the buildings, because I think more people would be more likely to do it. Some owners have decided to pay outright because they value the experience and they want to celebrate their building, and they have a sense for historic preservation. But people, well, the first, the first people who'd like to have one but seem not to be able to pull it together is Canaan Baptist Church. But that's such a unique building, because it's, not only is it the only art deco church that we have, and one of the few, I think, that Royer designed as churches or synagogues, except for, well, and it was just, it came out just as the same timing as the Frank Lloyd Wright-designed Unity Church in Oak Park, thanks. So it's a really unique church, it's in a pretty pristine condition, and he used a unique new material building block, which is basically the first time he ever employed cement block building. So it's a kind of a unique structure. So we have that, and I think that there's a way of meeting the, the requirements, and I think the cost to the city, matching funds, matching thing could be some labor that I'm willing to offer, or anyone else who wants to participate in this.
Isn't this a good example, or maybe this is why you're bringing it up now, as an example of a CLG grant project?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Because I'll say that the brochure, and I brought samples, I don't know if you've seen the brochure recently, I mean, it's only, there's only one brochure, and it's been, this brochure since day one. The funding was actually funded by the HPC, because that year, they had the opportunity to apply for one of these grants. And nobody, the HPC did not have a proposal to use the funds, and they were going to be lost otherwise. And so the HPC agreed to cover the funds of the, for the Royer District, even though ironically, the HPC never actually adopted the Royer District as a historic part of their, a part of their programming, which I think is like a mistake that might be rectified by our, our commission to adopt formerly the expansion and the existence of the Royer District.
Get all the property owners enough to agree.
Yeah. And the reason why it wasn't adopted was because the chair felt that there was already a Royer Historic District designated by the HPC, and that was Royer's home. So, so.
Forgive me, which one's Royer's home?
It's the one on, what is it, Bucy in Oregon?
Oh, okay.
And then the little?
The Ferry Cottage is part of it.
The white one.
He designed it, he lived there. But, you know, the Stevens Building, interestingly enough, was his first local office downtown when he was starting his architectural firm, so it would be cool to put a plaque on that. And, you know, whatever. So anyway, I'm kind of an advocate of it, I've been trying to support this since its initiation. Alona Metkovsky's idea to create this as a tourist and historic interest focal point in the city, and when we had our city's 170th, 75th birthday party, soon after that, we were dedicating a courthouse plaque, because the courthouse was getting renovated, same year the tower was being rebuilt and dedicated. So it's, it's got a good foothold in the community, and I think it would be nice to update the brochure. There is one mistake in the brochure that I'd like to see changed, and that's identifying the Knights of Pithias location, because it got the wrong building, because today the sign's on the wrong building. But if you look on the entablature of the facade, you know which building it is.
Because it says Knights of Pithias.
That's right, but it just says, yeah, doesn't, well, it doesn't say Knights, KPC, or something like that, but, so anyway, we missed it.
So would you like to, to try and do a CLG grant, to do the additional signs and the replacement signs and a brochure update?
Yeah, I could suggest maybe working on maybe four signs or something for the grant. I don't know how extensive it's expected to be, but the brochure would be nice to have anyone, especially now that, that the Hotel Royer is about to open up, and there's no brochures. We only have like 25 brochures left. We only have like 25 brochures left from that printing so many years ago.
I, I actually have two more boxes of these.
Oh, you do?
Yes, so.
Oh, that's unknown to me then.
Yes, yeah, they were, we were cleaning out one of the stairwells and found two boxes. So I'd be glad to give you both of them or give you one and then we can keep the other one here until that one runs out.
Yeah, the city, I would say the city should distribute them in the community.
And, you know, whenever I do something historic preservation wise, I'll bring a pile with me, but like those boxes have hundreds in them, so.
Yeah, well, Joseph Pryor might be really happy to know that.
So, and I see this as, since it's not something that the Historic Preservation Commission is voting on or making a decision on, as many people from the commission as want to work on it, a project or projects together, there's, there's no stopping because we're not messing with any open meeting exact stuff. You're working on a project.
Before we submit it, should we vote on it, do you think?
Well, I will end up, I, I wouldn't say so unless you want to bring it to the commission. Somebody who did not work on that project could, or I guess one of the people who worked on it could say, I would like a letter of support from the commission. I will abstain from the vote because I worked on it. But I think a letter from the commission in the, the application package would be a nice support thing. And we could even, again, I haven't ever written a grant for the city, but if it's normal to get letters of support from city council or the mayor, you know, we, we can pursue that as well. We have, you know, I know the grant cycle is supposed to open in September. They don't even have it posted yet, do they, Dave?
No.
David, sorry. So we don't know when it closes, but it won't be before the middle of November, I wouldn't think.
Yeah.
You know, gives time to work on things and to start talking to, you know, Kate Brickman to find out if we want a letter of support from city council or the mayor for a grant, you know, is that a thing that council or the mayor does? And she might say, sure, yes, and here's how you do it. You get on the council agenda and somebody makes a presentation.
I was curious, and I, you know, we have multiple different years and stuff here, but I was curious about like the estimated cost for the signage.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, good question. So a couple of years ago, like, like five years ago, the, the wall signs cost $600 about and the standing signs cost about $900. We only did two, so it hasn't, and I didn't pay for one of them, so. But it was sort of, but now the prices have gone up and now the wall plaque costs about $925 and the free signing, freestanding ones about 1,300. So they're more expensive because, you know, and they take about three, three months, two and a half months to produce. They're created by N Graphics, which is a extremely well-known sign company out of St. Louis, which I think N Graphics did all the Looking for Lincoln signage when that process was being done across the state. So.
And they're holding up.
And they're holding up.
Sorry, and they're holding up. I mean, they're, it's a durable.
Yeah. There's only one that didn't hold up and that's the one that for some reason was on the Royer Hotel now, Hotel Royer. It peeled, but it's great because they, they wanted to change the text anyways with the new ownership, so. And we only need to take the plastic text plaque off. The backing is metal and is durable and you can put in a new text plaque.
And as, you know, as technology and connectivity with people continues to evolve, you know, I know, I see a lot of educational sign programs going towards smaller, larger print, more pictures and less text, but then with some, like a QR code or something that directs people to a website if they want the full description. And, you know, you put that at the base and everybody, most everybody, many people have a smartphone now. So, you know, you look at the Courier sign, there's probably a couple, three paragraphs there. It might be that making it smaller, making the sign smaller, putting a lot of the text, you know, online would allow the text itself to be larger and easier to read from a distance. And then it would end up being less expensive because the sign itself is smaller. But those are design questions that people who are working on that grant can, can think about. They do.
If they could put QR codes on the brochure, that would be easy.
Any, what's the general life, you think, on those signs? 25 years, 20?
Yeah, well, so far, I mean, the, one of the courthouse looks pretty good still. I mean, you wouldn't know it's not, you know, just a couple of years old. So, yeah, they're pretty durable.
I don't think it hurts that in the, I know you mentioned possibly four signs, but I don't think it hurts to perhaps, you know, shoot for, for what you're talking about, which looks like, I think, about 10, right? And, and then as long as the grant budget is included and there, you know, you can write that like, you know, you're aiming for four to 10 or what have you. Perhaps if there is funding still available, as was mentioned, you know, you'd get all 10 funded versus only a few.
Well, 10's a lot to think about, but thank you for the thought.
So does anybody have any other additional things that they would like to take on? I hear ideas for rebooting the interactive web map and the Royer District program. Dennis would like to speak.
Again, maybe, I don't know if it'd be for this grant, but, but I think that the HPC might still want to consider giving guidelines, creating guidelines for new development in the historic district. Currently, there are no guidelines to advise redevelopment. And we've seen communities where you'll have kind of a historic district and there'll be one, you know, brutalist box, you know, sitting on the block and it kind of jars everything together. So you can be, there's levels of brutalism, you know, you could, you could do thoughtful brutalism as well as, you know, and I think that's something that, I mean, we, we created the district, but without guidance. And these, you know, and we could say these are guidelines. You don't absolutely have to do them and it's, that isn't going to cause, you know, we're not going to restrict you, but if you want to be a good partner to the community and at least the design be in rhythmic harmony with the buildings on the block, greatly appreciated and this is how you can do it. And I think that's something that this community, that our, that our, our commission really ought to be doing.
Well, we, we did ask.
Nobody else is going to do it.
Up to the executive department and they said that at this time, and this was back in April, that city council and executive department are not going to be providing any guidance or direction or support for historic district design guidelines, so.
Well, if the problem is that they don't want to spend staff time doing it, I could do that easily. I'm sure some of us here could come up with very, I mean, there's so many guidelines that could be used as a template. I mean, even we have our own guidelines in different, the Moore District and other parts of our own ordinances, which could be lifted to, I mean, I think that's just far, that's like short sighted really.
Dennis, are you thinking about the Main Street District?
Yeah. The one that was just created and approved about a year and a half ago.
One that was what?
Just approved.
The National Register District.
National, yeah. Or other others.
There does seem to be within this CLG grant framework, under the category of planning projects, one of the categories is revision of existing planning documents. And within that, they give us examples, well, it says periodically municipal and/or county comprehensive plans and local preservation plans should be amended to incorporate new information, such as recent designations, preservation ordinance amendments, design review issues, and revised goals and objectives. And then it says it's recommended that the applicant contact the IDNR because the SHPO is under the Division of Natural Resources, Department of Natural Resources, the IDNR SHPO staff to discuss the specifics of the proposed, proposed plan revisions prior to the application deadline, basically to let you know, yeah, that's going to work or no, that's not going to work. So there could be a conversation about that.
One idea and, and maybe it might help buttress future thinking is the preservation plan is from 1998 itself.
Yeah.
So it's, you know.
It's an oldie but a goodie.
Five years old, 26 years old. Maybe the preservation plan itself and its priorities could use revamping to lay out priorities that the Historic Preservation Commission wants to take on, possibly goals and objectives and implementation and action steps. And, you know, that could be, that, that could be a grant funded project depending on how you lay out how that would happen. Maybe you hire a firm to work with the HPC, but also, you know, talk, you know, you form a, a steering committee of beyond the HPC to start talking with city council and plan commission and residents about how the city of Urbana thinks about historic preservation. Right now, historic preservation is not in city council, you know, goals and objectives this year.
Unbelievable, but okay. Different council, different consciousness.
Right, exactly. So if, if there's a way to, you know, gin up that interest either by citizens or by leaders, maybe that starts with looking at the historic preservation plan.
Because here we are doing our work and if the city doesn't support it, you know, or the council's not interested in us, what are we doing? We need, we need to be engaging the council and the community to make this thing, you know, real.
You take bites. You work on the Royer signage district, you work on a, an interactive map to educate the people on what they have here in the city and you show that you're able to get these, you know, smaller educational projects done and we, we celebrate those and then we try and take bigger bites.
Just think of, you know, what support is constantly given to the bike and pedestrian commission and they've received the ability to create, you know, a silver and a platinum, I guess it is, certification for the community. It's a biking community. They print a map every other year or so. They have programs all over the place and, you know, they're active, they're excited about their work and you don't find, you know, I mean, I, I could say I go shop at Paca and, and I'm doing restoration on my, on my own project, but, you know, probably the community at large is just not even paying attention to these topics.
We're finding at the university that when people don't understand or value preservation, as soon as we link it to adaptive reuse, they get excited.
So that's cool.
And when you think about the resources that are in this community and when you think about the culture right now, especially among young people, among young people, there's absolutely no prestige in going to a store and buying new clothing. All of the prestige is in thrifting.
Yes.
So it's adaptive reuse. That's, that's the front line. And so we've just found that when we use that language, because historic preservation is in a sense about that, it's how do we bring this thing forward? It's not about ossification. It's not about removing it from use value. It's totally the opposite. You say adaptive reuse and people get excited. So maybe that's a way to spin it for the city to say, you've got all this material here that has value.
Yeah.
And that's, that's the front line of cool right now.
Yeah, these great storefronts and they can be used and reused.
They're incredible, they're incredible. I think every time I'm in Lincoln Square Mall, I'm like, this place is just an incubator, right? It's such an incubator of interesting things. The, the art coop, finding it, you know, a home there, the idea store there, there have been churches there, small clothing, craft stores, you name it.
Yeah.
That's, that's so great. It's not chain stores, thank heavens.
It's also a center for health and wellness.
Yes, right, right.
That could be a really strong.
Yeah.
Draw for this community.
And there are a lot of people who walk it, you know, besides the gym that's actually in there, or the various exercises, keto is in there and, yeah. So that's exciting, right? That's appealing, so it's full of assets. So if it gets marketed to people in that way, that's what this is about. What do you get by keeping something and putting it to some new use? We're just finding people get excited about that.
Terry, if we wanted to talk about this more at the October meeting and it's more about like reporting on what people have been working on, would that go under new business? It's not really, we're not really studying something. Okay, okay. So I would.
You could just pretend, yeah, it's new business.
So I, I hear interest, so I will check back in next week with folks via email and then maybe we can coordinate who wants to work on what things. And I will let John Presley know that we're interested in working on things. So if he can keep us updated when the cycle launches or when he has any information about launching it and how much, if any, the application is going to look different from the last cycle. So we could at least start looking at last year's application materials and start preparing for that.
Are the awards statewide or district wide or like by?
I think it's statewide.
Statewide, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. It's great competition, but you never know.
And just a couple other options that were listed there, you know, the historic resource inventory, that's, you know, the, the survey listing that we have now. You know, one could write a grant to say, we want 50 more properties surveyed and hire a consultant or an organization to do that. And that would add in those properties into the survey. I mentioned updating the preservation plan. And Dr. Kate Holliday had shared with me a, a Texas Instagram post where they had a historic trades workshop where, you know, we, Urbana did a, you know, reglaze your window workshop many years ago. This historic trades workshop is not necessarily an apprenticeship, but it's a, an educational program that leads to a certification in doing preservation work. I think it might be a week or a couple of weeks long, so, you know, certainly not this year, but as a staff member, I get inquiries about who do I do to fix my win, you know, who do I get to fix my windows or to hang my gutters? And around here, it's really hard. So is it something we need to start a, you know, a culture of historic trades people here?
To relay our brick sidewalks.
Pardon?
To relay our brick sidewalks.
And so that's, you know, I'll, I'll kind of wrap that up there. I know that probably took longer than people were expecting. Preservation Month activities, we had a great tour in, in March that was planned by Pastor Bob Freeman and Dr. Holliday. Sorry, May, May, five means May, of this past year. We had around 30 people come. It was a nice short walk from the market at the square over to, we went, walked through the mall. Joseph Pryor from Hotel Royer came and gave us a little bit of an update on the hotel. I thought it was really nice. He mentioned during the tour, you know, because people are asking him, hey, can you let us in now and show us stuff? And he's like, can't show you now because it's still a construction project, but if you put your name on the list, when it gets closer to opening time, he said he would arrange a, you know, a group tour for folks that had expressed an interest there at the tour. So that was nice. And then looking towards next year, we've already started talking about a mid-century modern housing tour, a re- about a mid-century modern housing tour, a revamp of the one that we did, twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen-ish. And Dr. Holliday and some of her grad students are planning this. And there's also a homeowner who owns a Replinger home in the City of Champaign who contacted our office. It's like, I called the City of Champaign, they weren't really interested in getting a tour. So he called us and, you know, we put him in contact with Dr. Holliday. And so it's really great to have something starting now in September, mostly being done by campus staff, but we can certainly help advertise it, put it on our website, do press releases and things like that. And there will be opportunities for, you know, commission members and, you know, Urbana folks to get involved with it, especially if you're interested.
Just one point of information along those lines. Professor Holliday and I and several other people are part of a group of people curating an exhibition that's going to be at the Cranert Art Museum this January through July, I think it is, called Making Place for the Arts at Home. And so it's looking at three houses primarily by three architects, Jack Baker, John Replinger, and Dick Williams. But the idea is not just to sort of focus on the house, it's to think about the ways in which houses were built by these architects as homes, literally to domesticate the arts, places where performances would take place. So like the Erlanger House or exhibitions or crafting. So thinking about the weaving of Dot Replinger and how a house was made to support that. So there are going to be some tours of places along the way. And it's been really phenomenal to be part of this group of people and just to be learning some of the specifics, the amount of intention and then the kinds of work that were generated in part because the university itself was inviting through the Festival of Contemporary Arts, this super saturation of painting and contemporary painting, sculpture, dance, et cetera. And they didn't have enough room for it. So the university became enterprising about where things would take place. And then as new practices were coming into being, like electronic music, computer music, like that, the, the experimental music laboratory was literally in the attic of a house that they had acquired on Nevada Street. Or the first Japan house was at Lincoln in California in a Victorian house that was converted. So, so it's, it's just thinking about that and then how people in the community got cultured into the idea, yeah, I could have a, an avant-garde musical performance in my living room, right? So it's a lot of fun to think about, but there are going to be walking tours as part of that to some of the really special environments we're looking at.
Can you keep us posted during meetings?
Yeah, you bet.
And we can, you know, put it on the agenda, but I mean, I think that's, part of this group's charge is to, you know, educate the public and what's going on.
And fundamentally, I mean, we're looking at houses that exist. And so there are photographs, contemporary photographs of each of these houses in great detail that are foregrounding both their strengths and then the problems. So the, part of the purpose is to draw attention to the fact that houses need care. Even mid-century modern houses, right, need like attention. And so it's not hiding that. It's showing that these are places where a lot of things happened and they are worthy of continuing attention because of their continuing potential.
And a wooden house is a difficult house to keep up sometimes because, you know, wood's subject to weather changes in rather dramatic ways.
Okay, and then the, eh, not the final, yeah, the final item.
I've got a couple things that, while we're grilling you.
Sure.
Do we have a full seven members or are we down one still?
No, we still have one vacancy. So if you know somebody.
Anybody applied for it?
Not yet.
All right. I thought I had somebody who was going to do it. All right.
We appreciate that. And then, of course, if anybody else knows somebody. You know, we are trying to be intentional about, you know, embracing diversity. But a full commission is one of my big priorities.
And the other thing is plaques for landmark buildings.
Yes.
The Van Doren House on Oregon probably doesn't have one yet.
I have four of them sitting on my bookshelf. And I need to work with David Seiler to get them installed. And, you know, we should do that. September is a good month for that.
Four properties that need them?
Yeah, so I've got for the Canaan Baptist Church, Van Doren.
He's been gone on and off and I can try to find out when he's back.
That would be great. I would appreciate that. And I mean, best case scenario, I would love to work with somebody from UPTV to have somebody, you know, the homeowner there to take a little video of, you know, why is it important to landmark your home? What have you gotten out of it, that sort of thing? Do some B-roll stuff of installing the, the plaque on it. Worst case scenario, I just take some photographs and, and they go up on the website. But again, it's an educational opportunity. Now that we have free things like YouTube, it costs nothing to put up little bits of, of education. Moving down, so CLG administration, we've, I've already submitted, well, I submitted the twenty-three, twenty-four annual report. Two highlights that came out of the meeting with John Presley were HPC must have four meetings per year. Even if we don't have any cases to vote on, we should, you know, be intentional about starting to talk about Preservation Month Plan early. We can talk about CLG grant writing, other things like that. But, you know, four meetings out of the year, out of twelve, should not be difficult. But we need to start early because there are times when we don't make quorum and.
And we're, we've had three, have we?
Well, we started a new year in July. So this is our first meeting of the new year. It's not a calendar year. Yeah, we go by the city's fiscal year. And then finally, HPC members are strongly encouraged to participate in at least one continuing education professional development-y thing, whether that's a webinar, a workshop, a course that you take, a conference that you go to. I know some of you do this every day, so it's harder to, you know, fit something extra in. But say if you design a new course or if you work on a new project that you have to educate yourself about a new preservation-related thing. They're pretty, I think they're, they're pretty accepting of what it is that they call professional development. Sometimes it's just as easy, you know, it's, it's a matter of sitting down to an hour and a half, two-hour webinar about something new. But, you know, the, the NAPSE conferences come on. I think we have discounted rates for things like that.
Starting the meetings, you know, I, maybe it's just because I'm newer, I don't know, but I, I always anticipate the meeting will happen and then I get a cancellation.
Right.
You know? And so my question is, are those cancellations planned more in advance? Or should they just be expected? Because I think it's harder to have a quorum if we don't actually know when the meetings will take place versus when they'll be canceled.
Right. So it's always supposed to be the first Wednesday of the month. In months past, we were directed to cancel the meeting if we didn't have a case. I think that thinking has now changed. So, you know, staff and, you know, we'll work with the chair to figure out, hey, we don't have a case. Are there things that we should be talking about? And we can put those on the agenda to talk about them. I will, you know, work on a, a reminder, you know, system of halfway through the month saying, you know, hey, just a reminder, first week, Wednesday of the month is X. We don't have any cases, but we're planning on having a meeting. And then maybe, you know, as the year winds down, if we've had our four or five meetings, we can be a little more, I guess, discriminating about canceling the meeting. But if somebody, and this is, you know, something, you know, I think I am now considered the secretary to the Plan Commission. So, you know, getting on the agenda, bringing an item to the agenda, I'll work with the chair and say, hey, if a member wants to bring an item to the agenda, notify me and the chair and, you know, we'll ask you a few questions about it. You know, might figure out whether it goes under study session or if it goes under new business or what, or if it's simply just a question that we can answer for you. But if it's something that you want to discuss at HPC, we still have to figure out whether it's an appropriate topic to talk about, whether it falls under the HPC's purview. But we're trying to, to figure that out. We don't often have that come up.
Yeah, I, I think that's great and I definitely am interested in that because I think a challenge, just for our group here, our commission is, especially when we have our Historic Preservation Month, you know, we, we build up this momentum and then we lose it.
Right.
Because we haven't had a meeting in a while. And so if there's a way that we can, you know, be part of that process, if there is something worthy of, of, you know, bringing, bringing forward at a meeting, just, just to be part of that process to see, okay, does it make sense? Do we need one, you know, closer to whatever we have going on?
And, you know, again, if, if there are things that aren't like voted on or decided on, if you want to work on projects, you know, it doesn't even have to be like a formal subcommittee or something, but those can then be things that provide grist to talk about at the, the next meeting. I would, I would like to see the, the commission become more active and, and take charge and do things, you know, within its scope. And I think we are going to have to educate the rest of the structure that HPC is going to do a little more than they have. So people might need to get used to that new, you know, the new look of the HPC or whatever, if that's how the members take it.
Better to be active than asleep.
Yes. So quickly moving back through the staff report. Like I said, Canaan Missionary Baptist Church was approved at the June meeting last year. So that can come off my staff report now. We do still have a, three certificates of appropriateness on the list. Buena Vista Court number one. This, there was a, a change of ownership, so I need to check in with the new owners and see if they even knew that there was a certificate on it and if they plan on finishing up the work, we can transfer the certificate to them.
What was that, do you remember?
It was.
Windows?
Access ramp and stair sidewall removal. I believe the access ramp has been removed, but the stair walls are still there. They're still working on porch repair. It looks to me like they're still working on it, but it might be the new owners are like, oh, yeah, no, this is where we want it to be. The roof repair has been completed and I just need to close that out for the Hotel Royer. They're done with the roof work. But the larger, you know, major and minor works, they're still working on those. A lot of it's been done, but it is not complete. So when they're done, they'll let us know. And then finally, a little bit of information that we provided about certificates of appropriateness at the June meeting. They don't expire. They are transferable. So if somebody wants to continue the work that a previous owner did, they take on that certificate and the, or we close it out. And that's the end of my staff report.
Thank you. Are there any other, any announcements I should ask? Close. Okay.
I would move to adjourn the meeting if you're done.
Thank you, any seconds? Great, wonderful. Okay, well, then we'll adjourn this public meeting at eight oh five PM.